And then we'll stand. Okay, we're gonna get.
Well, how about if, how about if we have someone stand behind us? Okay, and then. Important people can stand at the front.
Right.
And we could put the flag behind you or right here maybe.
You wanna have a call with each other, say what you're wearing.
Is Jeff coming?
Jeff? Get the whole town in your.
So where do you wanna go?
I think it's over there.
She wants you to hide the counter. Okay. Am I blocking Andy or?
No, no.
Am I good?
You're good.
Now?
Okay, if you can move over and you can sit by myself.
Wow, a lot of pressure.
Stand on the side of the floor.
Oh, sure.
You're the production.
And then she.
Wow.
Well, you wanna.
Oh, okay.
They could teach two guys over behind you, behind the chief.
Gotta move here, Tom.
If you guys, actually, if you guys come forward and more people get hit by you.
Nice, okay.
Can't we just go to your desk?
Come on, Chris. Yeah, this is not usually a bad big event.
Okay.
Tom.
You.
You're Mark today.
You.
And you can get in your car.
Oh, I forgot my tie.
Oh, that's okay, Chuck forgot his.
I got one. Did I ask why?
Want to borrow it? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties that are coming in on you as a Tufton Borough Police Officer, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the laws of state of New Hampshire, so help you out? Congratulations.
Thank you.
There's one more. It's called the oath of honor, it's from the IACP, and I've adopted it, and plead after me, on my honor.
On my honor.
I will never.
I will never.
Betray my badge.
Betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always.
I will always.
Have the courage.
Have the courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others accountable.
And others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Both in blue on here, right?
Blood oath next, no.
So whatever else you're gonna do.
Are we done?
Yeah.
Did you get all the pictures you need?
I think I did.
Badge is right there.
And you're, do you want me to?
Why don't you go get badges, bring them in.
Sure. With your camera.
Find out that picture.
Really, get that, bring it in. I'll be right back.
Come on, bring the camera in. Congratulations.
First one with the squad. Have Jean, you know him? We got right there.
He's bringing a badge back, that's a good picture. Yep.
Yeah, that is a good picture. It has to be assisted.
And a gun.
Let's get her trained first.
I get this all on film, you know, you can watch it later on.
Well, it's better than watching signatures, right? Passing papers along.
Yeah. Like watching paint dry, you know.
You could have been for that. I'm taking a picture with his camera of the family, would you like to get in there? They'd probably like that.
That picture.
There you go, everybody smile.
You're right. Smile.
There you go.
Thank you.
So Andy, will you send me some information? On her background and that sort of thing?
It's happy. Gillis.
That's all you want?
We'll see, I'll send you some.
Well, if there's going to be training.
Yeah, sure, I'll send you some, you'll send me the photos, right?
Yeah, you're good at that, right? Okay.
Sure.
All right.
More exchange.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We all set?
We're all set.
All right.
Thank you.
Again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Small world.
Are we doing anything else today?
Well. Yeah, we got at least a couple of things.
Five of my people.
They may wanna. They wanna work on the van.
Great. Thank you.
Careful policy.
Good. Have a good day.
What a great day.
Yep.
I've been to a few. Okay, so we have a few items to deal with, we can go do on that, we can do that as well. First up is a letter to a property owner. PID fifteen dash one twenty-two. And some other properties with the link on their taxes.
And that's one signature?
That's, the last one I did, yeah, so.
So remove that we have the chairs on that?
Second. Okay. Hopefully we'll. Move on this thing. Next item is. Has to do with. Report from. Sandborne Head on the second opinion on the. Testing in the area downstream from the landfill.
The outbreak.
The outbreak.
I didn't.
And they submitted their report, and they said they'd be happy to come discuss it with us next Monday for an additional five hundred dollars. So.
I saw the report. And I was trying to figure out what the recommendation was, and I thought there was additional testing, that they were.
But there are some. There are some. The recommendations in the report. I mean, I guess my sense, and I looked it over, so they made. Eight recommendations as a result of. Their review, which included. Some. Surface water sampling, assessment of some monitoring wells. And. Installation and survey of additional well points. And then some additional analysis. So I guess my sense is, while it would be nice to have them come talk to us. I don't know if we wanna spend, spend five hundred dollars to have them come explain this report that they sent to us, particularly in light of. As we go forward.
Yeah, we think if they could submit a more comprehensive RFP. For work that they're proposing.
Yep.
Then we could have a chat with them.
I have, I have a similar thought, is the Conservation Commission with the chairman is very knowledgeable. On all his workings and. Think of all the projects he's working on throughout the town. The other thing is Larry Gill, who's a former selectman in Plastow, that was his business. Right. And I think he's done yeoman's work, so let's. Yeah, so. Let's be good leaders in a science. I, I think they're, they're on the schedule for Monday, right, Larry and?
Yeah, for the whole borough, um, for I P.
Yeah, nineteen mile road.
Excuse me, I called it, yeah.
So I. My suggestion is that we, let's have a conversation on Monday, I'm a little bit like. You know, I don't remember how much we paid them to do this, and they did, judging by the output of the report, did a lot of work, but. The idea that comes on to us, they want some additional money at this point. There seems. Beyond where I wanna go.
It presumes that their explanation would be. Informative to someone who doesn't understand chemistry.
Well, right.
Initial explanation a little confusing.
Yeah. Uh, do we wanna work on the? This is basically a copy of Effingham's that. That's right. I thought was simple yet. Right. Needs the spirit of what we need, especially with FEMA. And Karen had circulated this. Yes. To the department heads. For any, for their review and any suggestions that, that they had for potential changes. And I believe they all said. It looked, it looked fine.
Yeah, no changes, yeah.
I only had a half a dozen, I guess I'd call it, titles. On page one, please go to section two, that says competitive bidding. In line two. And it says services exceeding fifteen thousand. Yep. I'd recommend we change that to thirty-five thousand, that brings it in line with the RSA requirements. We went through this on Lang Pond, remember?
See, I was going the other way. I was gonna go to five, but. I mean, if we look at, at the services and the equipment that we purchase. I mean, I think thirty-five is getting out to the other extreme of what we might do. And I think it's important that we get people used to the idea of having to get RFPs as opposed to just going up a front.
Fine, I, as I look at the number here, I'm thinking. We don't wanna make this too onerous on us or the departments, so. How many. Situations do we have where what we're looking at is in excess of fifteen thousand dollars? Not a lot. So I'm. Actually quite a few. No, Sodom Road Bridge, Lang Pond Road. Well. And the other thing is, it doesn't, it doesn't meant a board from being a little more microscopic. This, this, yeah, this requires everything above that level has to go out for bid.
Well, they.
We often solicit more than one proposal for smaller amounts. But one of the problems with saying anything over five thousand, or anything over a thousand, is every time you turn around, you gotta get, you say, well, okay, this is, you know. This is fifty-one hundred dollars, so now I'm gonna get two of them.
Well, okay, you know.
So, and I, so, so that's, that's why I, I'm. You mentioned things like Lang Pond Road. Okay, which is, which was a standalone project, the bridge up here on, on Sodom Road, which we already bid, we did. And I would submit to you that with respect to. Capital items, particularly that goes, go on the warrant the way they do, that. It's, it's been a matter of course that they go out for competitive bids anyway. So I, I'm. I, I agree with Chip, I think we ought to stay at fifteen. If. As time goes by, there becomes a.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Suggestion that either we're missing a lot of things that we ought to be doing competitively, we can always adjust that number down at some point in the future. But.
Yeah, I just think. One of the things that I noticed when I was not listening was that it kinda, it's a little. Easygoing if you don't have a policy like this. And I, what comes to mind initially is, for instance, the dump truck that. That was a good process. That was him going out into the marketplace and looking for a truck. Now, one might conclude if one were a layperson, that he got an extremely good buy. You don't know if you got a good buy unless you put it out to bid. That, so you took a big chunk of money and spent it.
Yeah.
With no controls.
Yeah, well, what I, what I, in that particular instance, what I recall at that time is. That article was passed at town meeting with a certain amount of money. That they started looking, it's like, is there enough to get a truck? So he, he did shop, were you on the board at that time? Yes. The, the warrant article was to set money aside, and Barney stood up and says, we need a truck. And, and moved.
See, I mean, the way we've been doing it lately is if we see a need, prior to town meeting, we're getting bids.
Right.
And getting some numbers, so that when we put a warrant article out there, we know we've got. You know.
Right, so that.
A reasonable amount of money.
So that article didn't really have enough money to fund the truck. And in fact, it cost more than that, but the board hit the additional cost in the operating budget someplace. Yep. No need to, you can spend more than, than is in the article, as long as you don't overspend the total budget.
But the process.
Right.
Okay, I don't have enough money to buy the truck I want.
Right.
Let's put it out to bid and find out how much money I need.
Yeah. And then I. I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you, yeah. All right, so you had some other? Yes, on page one where it says request for proposals. Yep. The town shall solicit proposals from at least three vendors, contractors, and then in parentheses, when available. So you have shell, and then you say when available, so you negate it. So I don't know how to remove the word shell, but I need to, I thought to clean that verbage up.
Maybe because if we don't get three, maybe, is that what you think that?
Right.
Because sometimes they're not.
The town will attempt to solicit proposals.
Yeah.
From three vendors.
Or just will, the town will solicit proposal from at least three vendors.
I have no problem changing. Okay. You understand the context in which I mentioned? Yeah. That's great, on page two, public notice.
We're done with page one?
I am. Public notice. Change the first sentence to state the town will give notice of bid proposals using the following resources. I thought they'd be, be, we can come back to that.
So you're gonna make sentence one and sentence two, oh, yeah.
I was. I didn't really think we needed the sentence one, quite frankly. Okay. Page four.
Hold on, can we finish? Okay, so the town. Will. Provide. Notice to all bid proposals using, cancel that as many resources as possible.
Yep.
Up to, but will not be limited to. Okay, so the town will provide notice to all bid proposals using. An advertisement in at least one newspaper of general circulation in the town.
Yes.
Tufton Borough. Comma, one newspaper statewide circulation, comma. Postings in at least two public places, one of which must be the town office, comma. The town website, comma, and when such notices are permitted, the New Hampshire Municipal Association website.
Yes. So. In general, with public notices, we do notices in, in a newspaper of general circulation in the area. Okay, so. We, we do not do notices in one of statewide circulation, so I'm questioning, I just, I just wonder if we, if we need to do that. I mean, what, what that says is every time we put out an RFP, we gotta put an ad in the union leader.
Right.
Or, you know, Foster.
If that's in the R C, that was lobbied for by the union leader.
Yes, I have no problem striking. Making it mandatory that it go. To statewide circulation.
Yeah, okay, so we'll take out.
One newspaper statewide circulation.
Right.
All right, and what I would, what I'm gonna suggest when we get done here is. All of this stuff, we're gonna be redlining in the draft, and then Karen, I would like you to send it to town council for review.
Mm-hmm.
Just to make sure that.
Okay.
That he's on orbit on this, and he may say for this, we need to have a statewide circulation, or whatever, but. All right, all right. Go ahead. The next one is on page four. Yep. The top line. All right. Things aren't numbered, so what, what line is it? The very top line. Yeah, but. Proposal, even though. Yeah. Proposal, even though. Yeah. Comes before contractor qualifications. Even though it may not be the lowest offered. And may call, it says or. Board, let's start with the whole sentence, the board of selectmen may formally go to accept any bid or proposal, even though it may not be the lowest offered. And may call for another round of bidding if necessary.
See, I, I don't think, I don't know who wrote this, but I think you can include that second part in the first part. So if you're gonna say, the board of selectmen may formally vote to accept proposal, even though it may not be the lowest offered, period.
Correct.
And then we have to go on to say, the board may also call for another round of bidding.
Yeah.
If necessary.
I like that, two sentences, yes. And, and again, the, the law, as I recall. Makes provision for not accepting any bid. So just because we request bids, and just because we have work that has to be done, if none of the bids. Meet the board's. Requirement, then you don't, you don't offer it. All right, so we're gonna put it, even though it may not be the lowest. Offered, period, and then what's the next sentence?
The board of selectmen may call for another round of bidding if necessary. So you had two options, the next sentence is totally confusing. With the vote of the selectmen, comma, be responsible for preparing a notice letter. What does that mean?
I get to go back to, to what leads in standard procedures for the board, that's, that's the. Does it will be? I had a question, I could.
So with the vote of the selectmen.
They are responsible.
The department head?
They or their designee are responsible for preparing a notice letter. Bid award. All right.
Are we?
Here, here's what, we gotta go back to the beginning of that paragraph, number nine, in standard procedure for a board, the department head in consultation with selectmen shall review bids which comply with the given specifications. Then, then the next sentence. Talks about what we just mentioned about reserving the right to reject all bids. Board may formally vote to accept any bid or proposal. Board may call for another round of bidding if necessary. So I think the be responsible for preparing a notice letter, it goes back to the department head, it's a department head responsibility, but it's, it's very confusing, because it's under the, what the department head's supposed to do.
So we need to, let me suggest that we could say, with the vote of the selectmen, just get rid of the comma.
Yep.
A notice letter, a bid award, will be provided.
Excellent.
To successful.
Yes.
Contracted.
As well as all.
As all other parties who submitted bid proposals.
Yeah. Yes. That's smooth. Yeah. The next one is on the same page where it says miscellaneous provisions, sole source proposal slash bids. I say eliminate, the town of Tufton Borough will not entertain the solicitation of a single source vendor for supplies and or services. The next sentence, the town will consider a vendor if they are the only submission provided, and it goes on to, we, we don't need that first sentence. I think you're right. Not entertain the solicitation of a single source vendor. So, well. Yeah.
Well, if specification changes are made prior to, okay, that's, so that's a different. A different thing, okay. Yeah, I'm fine with getting rid of that.
And the last one, gentlemen, on the last page under exception, for exceptions. Go to F. Where the town decides to contract with nonprofit organizations for health, welfare, social or recreational services to the town. Where the town budgets to contract. The budget committee has a, has a thing under health agencies, and they okay the budget, and that's voted on at, at town meeting. And there's been some controversy about that in the past, so. Well. You know, certainly. I'm fine with it the way it is, but what you're suggesting is something that is more restrictive than that. And, and I, I'm not sure. I, I. There might be something that falls outside the normal going through the budget for any process during the year, you know, in. Okay. That's what they pay us the big bucks for is that. Is the, is the, exactly. I'm, I'm happy.
I wanna go to, on the last page.
Yep.
Item three.
Yep.
Do we wanna extend this to five years? We're gonna contract. I mean, it mentions contracts for assessing continuity and waste disposal.
Mm-hmm.
I. And this isn't the last time we're gonna visit this, but I just gotta put everybody I noticed, I'm a little concerned about this paragraph. Only that you award Mason the paper goods contract or whatever. And it just goes on forever, regardless of price increases or controls or whatever, so I think at some point in time, you have to revisit all of your providers. Take a look at.
Well, watch myself, and so the wording here says that through the end of the contract, or five years, whichever is sooner. So you're suggesting maybe sooner than five years.
I'm just suggesting that we probably are gonna have to look at this again, because I think in five years. Who's gonna remember? And we've always done that, we've always used porter office machine or whoever, and that's just what we're gonna do. I mean, it's like our IP guy. And we have contractors. Albert.
Tom.
Yeah. We should look at that. I mean, I, I think he's probably the best guy we could get personally, but it's still...
Well, it's the same thing.
I think we're the fiduciaries.
You and I have had conversations, every five years do we change auditors? Or every five years do we change locksmiths or whatnot? It's not that we have a problem, but it's due diligence, isn't it?
Well, auditors you have to change, but IP people, just keep them honest. Anyway, I'll leave it alone.
So are you suggesting it should be less than five years? Or that we just need to make sure that we do it?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to review this. And maybe, maybe it's got to be a paragraph that the selectmen are required to review the campaign policy every three years or whatever.
Right.
At least once during each selectman's term, we can look at the...
I know some towns, for example, bid out salt and sand purchasing winter. They do that every year.
We did that with salt this year. But, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing it up.
Did you get all those changes?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
I've got it written down, Karen, if you want to take mine.
Okay.
So, next step is...
Can I add some? Can I add a last thing at the end?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, I got to put an item seven on this last part, which said, which is going to say the board of selectmen shall review and edit this procurement policy on or about I should do it that way? No. Every three years following it's an act. Something like that.
Sure.
It keeps us honest.
Yep.
Is it to the government? Put a little balance in place.
Yep. Okay.
Now here, you're not going to be with us. So who's going to keep us honest?
Lloyd. All right, do we have any other...
This is the last day you can change your mind.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Yep. All right. The other things that we have in here, I don't have answers to yet on that. This notice about pawing across roads and seasonally maintained roads. And I guess we can deal with this on Monday. Right? All right.
I don't know what she's looking for. I have to walk around.
Yeah, yeah, so it's...
And I read the, the report on the RIB. Did you read that?
Yes.
And there, and Steve's coming in on Monday.
He's coming in on Monday. He will review that among other things. So, any other business for today?
Good.
All right.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
All in papers?
All right.
Thank you, Joe. I'm sorry if we didn't use all your tape.